Good evening and welcome to the May 27, 2021, meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council. And with that, I'd like to ask you all to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins?
Present.
Councilmember Daniels?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Present.
And Mayor Miller?
Here.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, May 31 at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed on the City of Citrus Heights' YouTube channel.
Thank you, Amy. And does anyone have any changes to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
We have approval. Second?
Motion by Bruins, second by Middleton. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Miller?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is Presentation Number Four, A Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights in recognition of local business owner Cecil Dyer.
And with that, I've asked Vice Mayor Middleton to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Cecil Dyer, local business owner, opened Cecil's Hair Salon on Greenback Lane in 1996. Whereas due to Cecil Dyer's business acumen and success, he subsequently opened All Welcome Barber Shop on Mariposa Avenue in 2011. Whereas Cecil Dyer supports and mentors youth in the Citrus Heights community through organizations such as the Boys and Girls Club of America. Whereas Cecil Dyer is a respected leader of the Citrus Heights faith community and a guiding light and a minister of true faith at Living Word Christian Fellowship Church. Whereas Cecil Dyer displays his bravery, hard work, and dedication as a member of the United States Army Local Veterans Community. Whereas Cecil Dyer's 25 years of unwavering support of the Citrus Heights community began prior to incorporation and steadfastly continued through the major recent cities initiatives such as Measure M. And whereas Cecil Dyer is a loving husband of 45 years to Gloria Dyer and proud father of five children. Therefore, be it resolved, the City of Citrus Heights, the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby thank and honor Cecil Dyer for his service to the community of Citrus Heights. If I could say a few words also. Cecil Dyer had a huge impact on my family when we first moved to Citrus Heights. That was the first barber shop we went to, and we stayed there, we're still there. He cut my father's hair, my husband's hair, my boy's hair, my mom's hair, even my hair from time to time. And he's always been a huge supporter of everything that is great about Citrus Heights and love to see our community thrive and grow. He supported our police department, our chamber. He was a very good man, and we are very blessed to have had him in our community.
Thank you, Portia. All right, with that, next item.
And I would like to know that the family was invited there on the, as a panelist on the Zoom tonight as well.
Would they like to say anything? Hi.
Yes, I'm Gloria Dyer, the wife of Cecil Dyer. And I would like to say I am thoroughly appreciative of this honor bestowed upon the memory of my late husband. He really has loved Citrus Heights and lived here for over 30 years and been active in the community. The people here have been so good to us. And it has just been a wonderful place to live and raise our children as well as have our church here. We have just been a, this community has just been wonderful to us. And we are so thankful that the city has recognized his value to this town that he has loved so much. It has been, it was a great privilege for him to serve this community and many people who came into his shop as well as into our church. Thank you so much.
You're certainly welcome, and we will get you the proclamation so you can display it in a prominent location in your home, Gloria. Thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Daniels.
I believe it was Portia that brought this to us, and I want to thank you for that. There are people like this that live in our city, work in our city, and I think we would do well to recognize them more. And so I would say that to all my fellow council members to find those stories and bring them forward. Obviously, this great man did a lot of great things for this city, and it's wonderful that Portia brought this to us so that he could be properly recognized.
Well, I concur with it, and I want to thank you, Gloria. I know you served alongside your husband for many years, and you are a star family in our community, and we hope to see many more just like you come to Citrus Heights.
Thank you. And also, our children all went to San Juan High and did well afterwards. And my daughter Johanna is right here, too. She went to San Juan High, and she graduated from Stanford and also Harvard Law School.
Wonderful.
So Citrus Heights has been good to our children, and our husbands have done well as well.
Well, as a former Spartan, thank you for sending them to the best school in California.
And second-best in Citrus Heights, but that's debatable.
Thanks, Gloria.
Okay, I think we're ready for the next item.
The next item is Presentation Number Five, A Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming May 28, 2021 as Orbisculate Day.
Okay, when I saw this on Agenda under review, I said, what is that word? And can you use it in a sentence? Well, I now know what the word is because tonight we'll be reading a proclamation for Jonathan and Hillary Krager, two siblings who are working hard to uniquely honor their late father Neil, who passed away last year from COVID-19. A few months back, our city was tagged in a Washington Post tweet linking it to an article outlining the Krager family's plans to honor their father, who playfully invented the word orbisculate while he was in college to describe when citrus fruit squirts in your eye, then proceeded to use it so often that his kids were shocked to discover it really wasn't a word at all, and it wasn't in the dictionary. So Hillary and Jonathan have launched a campaign in Neil's honor to get orbisculate into the dictionary. Of their 78 goals to legitimize the word, getting recognition from our City of Citrus Heights is number five on their list. Their efforts have received publicity from the Washington Post, National Public Radio, The Ellen Show, CNN, CBS, and many others. The family is from back east, New York and Boston, so we're glad they can join us over Zoom for our tribute tonight. When we read about their story, it resonated with us as it clearly, as it clearly it has with so many, and we are honored that the City of Citrus Heights can be part of their campaign. I want to read a little excerpt from the family's website for the campaign, which is orbisculate.com. "Last spring, our dad passed away from COVID-19. The pain hasn't left us, but neither have the lessons he taught us. To find a way to laugh, even in dark times, to follow your own path, and when you don't like the solutions in front of you, to make up your own. This is not the standard tribute for a loved one, but he was an unconventional person, so it seems fitting to honor him in this unconventional way." And now I will read the proclamation. "Whereas the City of Citrus Heights is a community that celebrates resourcefulness and pragmatism, especially in the face of adversity, and our community uniquely understands the importance of nomenclature as our city was named in 1910 by a real estate developer who hoped the vision of Citrus Groves would attract more people to the area. And the community of Citrus Heights recognizes how hard the COVID-19 pandemic has been on those who have lost loved ones. And we look to celebrate the spirit of families, connectivity, creativity, and humor. The Krager family has gained nationwide recognition for honoring their late father Neil, who died of complications from COVID-19, by working to get this made-up word orbisculate recognized in the dictionary. So now, therefore, be it resolved, that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim May 28 as Orbisculate Day, and do hereby urge all Citrus Heights community members to embrace this new word, which is an intransitive verb meaning to accidentally squirt citrus juice in their pulp into one's eye as from a grapefruit when using a spoon to scoop out a section for eating. We honor the Krager family's spirit and determination, which has earned them nationwide publicity, and we wish them all the best in their mission to get the word orbisculate recognized by the dictionary. So we have set our hand and sealed this 27th day of May 21, signed by myself and the City Clerk of Citrus Heights." And with that, I'd like to invite the family to join us and say a few words. There they are.
Thank you. We just want to say thank you so much. We wrote such a wonderful tribute, and also to be honored alongside another who sounds like really a great father and husband, is really special as well. So thank you very much for embracing our word and for bringing us a part of your sympathy.
I think one of the things that's been so special about what we've been doing is how much we've been able to connect with people all around the country and find a way to have something to share and have something positive at dark times. And so being able to come thousands of miles through the Zoom screen to feel that we're in Citrus Heights with you and that you're with us in this campaign is really meaningful, and we are so grateful for your work in reaching out to us and putting together this great honor. So thank you very much, we really appreciate it.
Well, thank you also for bringing some wonderful levity to us. We are so sorry for your, the pain and loss that you've experienced this last year, and it's a very special tribute to Citrus Heights and to you that you're able to reach through that and bring some joy and some laughter and some commonality around the United States. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have to tell you, my late father was a college English professor, and he would love this. And he might have been...
I was unsure which way you were going to go. Is he going to love that or hit? Okay, good.
And one of the little side jobs he did is he edited dictionaries, so I think there's a connection there. Well, we'll see if we can pull some strings.
Let us know when you're successful.
Absolutely.
Well, you're a part of this journey now, so we're well.
Yes, thank you so much for including us in this. That is amazing. My son is now using the word all the time, and it's awesome. He's 10, and he's just like, I can't wait to see it in the dictionary, so we're rooting for you.
We look forward to celebrating with him.
Good. Oh, okay. Well, thank you so much for joining us, and again, we wish you luck on your endeavor. How many items have you checked off the list of, what was it, 78 items, goals?
Yeah, I don't know, it feels like maybe 40-ish or something, but we haven't done it. We need to do another count. It's a good question, but...
Yeah, but this one's a very exciting one. Don't think that they're all created equal, they're not.
Well, maybe we could push it over the top here, so we're all rooting. We're all rooting for you, and thank you so much for joining us. You're on the East Coast tonight?
You are, yeah. So in a couple hours, we'll be Orbisculate Day here, so...
We'll just start the celebration early.
All right, well, don't get any in your eyes.
We'll try not to.
That's good.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Well, that was fun to honor both men. And with that, we shall get to work.
The next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
All right, Councilmember Bruins, what have you been up to?
Okay, first of all, we had a regional sanitation meeting or board meeting this week, and we officially approved the hiring of Christoph Dobson and promotion to the new district engineer. He'll start in September and be leading the both sanitation districts, regional sand as well as SASD. And we also had the long-term financial plan and capital funding report on SASD. And very happy to report to you that there has not been a rate increase from the side of the sanitation district for 11 years. We've held the rate at $19.85, and there's no expected increase for the foreseeable five or six years. And then this week, I also had the very exciting opportunity to attend a ribbon cutting for the American River Collegiate Academy, which is our new charter school here, soon to be building a building in Citrus Heights. They were unable to do an actual ribbon cutting when the school year started because of COVID, and so they are celebrating the end of their first school year with kindergarten and first graders. They are expanding into second grade next year, and they're adding another class of first graders. So if you have a youngster that age, you know someone who does, who would like to have an excellent education in entering the kindergarten, first or second grade, the school's phone number is 916-672-3550. Give them a call and let them know you're interested. And then I'd also like to acknowledge and congratulate the chamber for a great event Saturday night when they hosted Journey Revisited at the mall. There were over 400 people there, all spread out. They did a marvelous job of orchestrating it and engineering it so that everybody was safe but still having a lot of fun. And I just want to thank them. They raised $20,000, which they are going to put back into the business community to help businesses that have been financially impacted by COVID. And so that was a great first foray out into the world of meeting again face-to-face, and they did a great job, so I just want to commend them for that. And then finally, I want to bring forward to your attention something that many of you may already know, and that is that we have a very special family here in Citrus Heights, Joseph and Andrea Sevier. Joseph is the managing partner of the Texas Roadhouse and has made it his mission and his passion to give back to this community, which he has done in very wonderful ways. He's supported the Police Activities League, he's supported the Salyon Art Community Center. He is loved by his employees. He actually has an employee that travels from Modesto every day to go to work for him. And they learned within the last month that their little one-year-old son Milo has a brain tumor. In fact, I think he has a few brain tumors, and it's in his spine as well. And I'm really pleased, they put it out on Facebook so the community would know. They're a family of faith, they trust God for the outcome, but still, this is tough. So I want to thank the Sentinel for running a lead article about them and getting out the word. And I want the rest of the community to know, who hasn't heard about this already, that there is a Facebook page dedicated to Milo and supporting him. It's called friendupdates@facebookmail.com. You can see pictures of the family, you can give them well wishes. And you can support them in another way, too, because one of their closest friends and employees started a GoFundMe page. And so if you go to gofundme.com/roadies, R-O-A-D-I-E-S, dash four, dash baby, dash Milo's, dash recovery. The level of love that the community feels for him is really evident in that their goal is to raise $100,000 to support the family as they make excursions to San Francisco. The baby is undergoing their first level of treatment right now, chemotherapy, and to help offset some of the costs. And I think as of today, they've raised nearly $30,000. So if you'd like to help this family who's given so much to Citrus Heights, please do so, and thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie. Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you. Airborne meeting today, not a whole lot. The main thing was that we did approve the budget for the upcoming year at a little more than $60 million. It has a built-in deficit of some degree, kind of a concerning degree. And one of the comments that was made was they'll be coming back later in the year to look for additional funding. And I don't know where they're going to find it, but, you know, cleaning the air is very important, obviously, but at some point, what's happening is that we're getting a lot of mandates that are coming from either the state level, the federal level. In 2015, the attainment levels were changed. They were lowered dramatically after they had been achieved. And it's causing a lot of problems. And one of the things that's going to happen is that there is, and forgive me, I can't remember what it stands for. It's BACT guidelines, and it deals with engines and generators and stuff like that that are large, very large. And when new companies are going to be coming online or companies replacing things and upgrading, they're going to be looking at a lot more fees. And I'm very concerned about that type of thing because we're already seeing exodus of companies out of California as we throw more and more onto them. And so it's just very concerning, and it just, I just don't understand why there's not enough pushback. And so hopefully, we'll see some pushback because, you know, we're tired of extra money being asked for, we're tired of extra taxes, and at some point, there has to be a reasonableness to it. So I'll get off that bandwagon. I was very pleased to attend the concert along with, I think, all of the council members?
I didn't know.
Oh, Steve, okay, I heard there was a sighting.
It was my birthday.
Okay. But what a great event, put on by the chamber. And like Jeannie said, 400 people there. It was rocking, and, you know, they are Journey Revisited, but my God, if you close your eyes, you think you're listening to Journey. And the lead singer lives right here in Citrus Heights, so it's wonderful. They're extremely talented, and everybody had a really, really good time. It shows that the community will come out, it will support events, and I hope it's the thing that we look at and/or somebody else looks at when it comes time, hopefully, to do something with the mall property because I believe that the success of that property lies in changing it to an entertainment-type venue and everything else around it, supporting that. On Thursday, I attended the Sue Frost Citrus Heights Community Get Together, about 50 people, good people, and she answered a lot of questions, talked about homelessness, talked about Laura's Law, which it deals with homeless, excuse me, people experience mental issues who are usually involved in homelessness, and it creates a path for them to get off of that and get help. And what we don't know is, it looks like the county will take on the program for sure, but what was uncertain is whether that stops at the city line. And so that's being looked at, and I think if it does stop at the city line, it might be something really worth our dollars to look at, maybe putting some into. But we'll come back later, I think, hopefully, with a presentation on what Laura's Law is, and then hopefully, again, if we need to put some money towards that because I think we'll save it in the long run for what our law enforcement mainly has to deal with in regards to homeless people experiencing mental issues. What else, what else, what else? I was pleased to hear that, or to read that, we have received our first round of federal funds, 7.8 million, I believe it was. And mainly pleased because I hope that we can push towards resolving some of our public safety issues and concerns with staffing. I did notice, I believe, today that one of our reserve officers was promoted to full-time status. So great to see that, great to see that vacant positions are being filled, and hopefully, we can move towards getting full funding in place for our public safety issues mainly and other things. I monitored some activity on Facebook regarding a continuing problem at the property at Antelope and Old Auburn, where Jeannie mentioned earlier, the school is going to be built at that location, but they still do not own the property. And so I reached out to the pastor of the church there, who actually still owns it, asked him to sign a trespass order so that the police can actually remove people from the property, and he was very happy to do so. So my point in bringing this up is that he didn't know about the ability to sign such an order, and so we really need to do a better job, I think, in encouraging our property owners to sign these orders so that the police can do something when they come upon people on these properties. And this is not an attack on homeless people. This is an attack on the negative aspects of homelessness and what that can bring to the community. It's a separate issue, and we need to be able to have a tool to be able to use so that people, and with private property especially, have the ability to not have that property negatively affected and also the neighborhood. And let me see, anything else? The final thing is, on June 15, the governor is supposed to lift the ban, the order, or the emergency order, I should say, around everything that we're involved with anymore, it seems like. And so one of the things I would like to see is hopefully, we're coming back to open council meetings with the public being able to attend council meetings in the chamber. Again, that's June 15, so I would hope that we're open back to the public after that with our second meeting in June, and that's it.
Thank you, Brett. Councilmember Schaefer?
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, I also attended the concert, Journey Revisited, that was held by the chamber. I had the opportunity to meet Amanda Camacho, the new chamber president. She brings a tremendous amount of very good energy to that position. I really look forward to some really good things of her leadership. And I also, well, I sit on the Sacramento County Library Board, and I wasn't able to attend the meeting today, but I am on the RIFCA CAS that's going to be retiring. She's the CEO of the Library Board, so she has about 800 employees, and that's a tremendous responsibility there. But I am on the committee to hire a new replacement CEO, so I'm very excited about that. She's extremely communicative as far as the process goes. I think that there's a lot of insight that we can sort of glean from that because we all have our own challenges at that respect. So with that, that's really all I have to report. So thank you very much, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Tim. Vice Mayor Middleton?
Thank you, Mayor. So we had a CACOG board meeting. We're going over annual budget reviews, closed session items, and also we're looking at our next round of funding for local projects. So we'll have a lot more to report about that probably after our June meeting. I also attended the Citrus Heights Chamber Drive-Thru Concert, which was a lot of fun. I had my kiddos in the back. They were not really interested in Journey Revisited. They knew one song, "Don't Stop Believing," and they kept chanting it. So, but also, I want to be, speaking of children, school's about to be out for our district, and I want to make sure that everyone knows that Sunrise Parks and Rec has actually brought back some of their summer programming. And so if you're looking for something to do with the kiddos, please go out and check that out on the website. And also, Single Mom Strong is offering summer camps at severely reduced costs so that single mothers in our community can have an opportunity to go to work, and their children will also be occupied and learn a lot of cool things throughout the summer. They have eight weeks worth of programming, ranging from dinosaurs and building things with Legos. It's really exciting, so please check that out.
Thank you, Portia. Well, for me, I had a regional transit meeting on Monday, which I tried to attend. It was a virtual meeting over Zoom, and that's when the crane hit the Comcast fiber cable over on Antelope and 80, and so I wasn't able to get into the meeting. And so I have no idea what happened. There was no major action items, but I got the night off. I did want to mention before COVID-19 hit that we, our police department, which is out ahead of everybody, already had Sacramento County Mental Health Counselors embedded with our police officers and also counselors on domestic violence. We had to curtail that because of COVID-19, but hopefully, with our ability to restore funds to the police department, we can pick back up where we left off. And I also wanted, regarding the Federal Relief Act, to thank our finance staff. They did a great job. I know we got our budget done early, but because we had our numbers and our backup as to what the loss in revenue was for us, we were one of the first cities in the nation to get a check. So I'm really proud of the work they've done and will continue to do. And I believe we'll be bringing back on June 10 revised budget. I could be wrong, but that's our next meeting. And so a little sigh of relief here on our side. And again, thank you so much for the hard work of our staff. And with that, we're ready to go on to the next item.
The next item is public comment, and members of the public may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you wish to address the council during the Zoom meeting, please use the raise hand function or star nine from a telephone to indicate your desire to speak. When your name is called, the city clerk will allow you to unmute your microphone to speak. And I do have one written comment that I will go ahead and read first and then see if we have any raised hands. The public comment. Hello, my name is Magaly Kincaid. I apologize if I got that incorrect. And I am a mother of two children, attending the San Juan Unified School District. Each board member should have received an email from me earlier today asking for your support in helping a small but mighty group of parents and community members seeking to change the way we elect our school board members, and to increase the school board from five to seven trustees. We seek this change to ensure we have local representation. Many schools in Citrus Heights are struggling, and we need a local representative who deeply understands the needs and will be a champion for our families. I urge the city council to support these efforts before it's too late. I also encourage other families, students, and community members to get involved. Reach us on Facebook at Neighborhood Elections, and thank you. And that was the only written public comment. And I do not see any raised hands.
Okay. Well, if there's no more public comment, we can move on to the consent calendar.
The next item is consent calendar items six, seven, eight, and nine.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion from Daniels, second from Bruins. Clerk Van, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Miller?
Yes. Consent calendar carries five zero.
The next item is public hearing, item number 10. The subject is draft amendment to the general plan housing element. The recommendation is to review and comment on the revised draft amendment to the general plan housing element, and adopt a resolution finding that the adoption of the amendment to the general plan is exempt from SEQA per section 15061B3A, and adopting the draft amendment to the general plan housing element as final.
Okay.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, everybody here be okay?
Yeah, welcome, Eric.
Thank you very much. Mayor, councilmembers, as Amy mentioned, tonight we'll be discussing the housing element update, specifically discussing HCD's review of the proposed draft housing element, since the council reviewed this draft element in January and the recommended changes that they made. To let you know as well, that staff has worked diligently with the HCD to incorporate all the necessary revisions. And as of our last correspondence with HCD, we are anticipating a letter of compliance after their public review period closes. So just as a quick reminder of what we're looking at here, the city is now in its fourth housing element cycle, which accounts for the 2021 to 2029 period. This updated housing element will reflect the new housing needs projected by the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, or SAICOG, and the available population and housing data that's been made available by the U.S. Census Bureau, as well as various other agencies. So this timeline shows the actions taken on the draft element since the first Planning Commission meeting held in December. After council's recommendation to forward the draft in January, HCD provided its first feedback letter in March, which included a requirement for an analysis and programs related to affirmatively furthering fair housing, or AFFH for short. Unfortunately, they did not release their guidelines for the required analysis until the end of April, and I'll go in more detail on that in a moment. But after providing the necessary revisions, staff resubmitted the draft element to HCD for review, and we received one last comment letter on May 11th, pointing out just a few other minor changes to be made. Staff made the requisite changes and resubmitted, and has since confirmed with HCD that those changes have satisfied all of their requirements. So of the revisions that HCD requested, these three were the most significant. As I mentioned before, it included an affirmatively furthering for housing analysis, some updates to the vacant land inventory, as well as an updated program implementation table. So going into a bit more detail on the AFFH component, Assembly Bill 686, which was signed in 2018, established new requirements that require cities and counties to take deliberate actions to foster inclusive communities through fair and equal housing choice. So this would be done by establishing policies to address disparities in housing needs, access to opportunity, patterns of racial and ethnic segregation, all of which is collectively referred to as the AFFH process. So housing elements are now required to include or address the following five components, as you see listed on the slide here, which are inclusive and equitable outreach, a fair housing assessment, analysis of sites, inventory, identification of contributing factors, and then lastly, priorities, goals, and actions to affirmatively further fair housing. So staff worked directly with Ascent Consultants to develop an AFFH policy framework, which follows HCD's guidelines closely that were released in April. And for the most part, existing policies within the housing element were already supportive of AFFH law. HCD did require additional policies that would bolster it further, and those can be seen as policy 28.9 in the updated general plan. So in regards to the vacant land inventory, after initial review, HCD requested that the city make changes to its unit estimates to show that the large sites listed in the inventory could realistically accommodate the low-income unit requirement. Staff revised our vacant land inventory and sent it to HCD on April 8th of this year, and these changes are reflected in the attached draft. Overall, the total number of units in the vacant land inventory, and this is the most important takeaway, exceed the city's RENA share by 156 units, with the additional banked units listed there on the bottom right-hand side, that technically are not counted as being counted towards RENA, however, provide a backup, as it were, in case any of the developments that are listed towards RENA end up not going through. So lastly, the program implementation table is a schedule of actions that help achieve goals within the housing element. There are four components required within this implementation table. Those include the actions themselves, timelines for implementation, quantified objectives, what we hope to achieve from each of these actions, and the agencies responsible. So specifically, HCD requested that the city include a few additional programs and tweaks to existing programs that assist in the development of adequate housing to meet the need of extremely low, very low, low, and moderate income households. Staff made these changes and provided an updated policy table to HCD, which included all the requested policies on April 27th of this year, and that satisfied all of HCD's requirements. Nothing has changed in our assessment of SEQA. So again, this housing element update does qualify as exempt, where the amendment did not have the potential for causing significant effect on the environment, falls under the common sense exemption within SEQA. This applies, you know, all land within the vacant land inventory is currently entitled, has had some level of environmental review in regards to SEQA, and there are no significant policy changes that would have any environmental impacts. So this is staff's recommended motion on the item, and I am available to answer any questions you may have on the subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singer, for the comprehensive report. This is a public hearing, so first I'll entertain any questions that the councilmembers may have. Then we'll open up the public hearing, and then finally consider the resolution. So with that, are there any council questions? I'm seeing no. So I will open the public hearing and see if anybody would like to comment on this.
And I do not have any written comment, and I do not see any raised hands.
Well, that's because of the thoroughness of the report. I will close the public hearing and look for a motion, comments?
If there are no comments, then I would like to move that we approve the resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, finding that the adoption of the amendment to the general plan is exempt from SEQA per section 15061B3A, and adopt the draft amendment to the general plan housing element as final.
Second.
And I'd like to second that with a comment that, I can tell that there was a tremendous amount of work that went into this report, very thorough, very well done, Eric.
Okay, so there's a
Thank you.
Motion by Bruins, second, I was going to say second by Middleton, kind of beat Tim to the punch, but I'll give the second to Mr. Schaefer.
He had to travel thousands of miles to get that second.
His voice took a lot longer to get here. The rest of us are in person. So with that, would you please call the roll, Amy?
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Miller?
Aye. Next item, please.
Next item is department reports, and we do not have any. The next item is city manager items.
No, thank you.
And with that, the next item is items requested by councilmembers, future agenda items.
I do have one. And it's because it's that time of year, and I know it's an irritation to a lot of our residents and a lot of our councilmembers as well, and that's illegal fireworks. And I would like to at least ask staff to look into alternatives. I'm aware of some resolutions that have been, and ordinances that have been passed by other cities that would make the property owner where illegal fireworks are being set off responsible. And so I'd like to hear what our options are. This is, every year, we go through this for Fourth of July and New Year's, and some nights in between for no reason. So with the support of the council, at least two other members, I'd like to ask staff to look into what our alternatives are on this.
I'd like to second the mayor on that motion as well.
Let me just, I'm in support of that, too, but I also wanted to mention that I had, I think we all got an email from this one lady about fireworks. And it's been an area of concern for me for a long time because of the danger, and it just seems to be getting worse and worse, and it's beyond the capability of both our police department and our fire department to respond. It's just too much.
Yeah.
And so I believe our city manager is looking into this issue and discussing it with other, potentially discussing it with other city managers in the region, because it'd be great if we could get a groundswell of support so that we could address the issue of illegal fireworks. And, yeah.
Thank you. So I'd ask for a report back at our next meeting. That's okay?
Yep.
Mr. Boyd, you're, go ahead, Tim.
I have just a really quick comment. I was delighted to see that we did receive $7.8 million. I read that in the Sentinel. Unfortunately, I couldn't hear that through city channels. It's a little bit concerning for me. When I talked to the city manager in the two-by-two, he kind of said, "Well, you know, it's really something. I don't have those conversations as daily conversations with yourself and with Vice Mayor and Jeanne Bruins." I just don't have those conversations with Councilman Daniels or I. And that's very concerning. I can certainly see that, I think there should be a fair and equitable dissemination of information. And just because we may not be, we may not have the best relationship, we should also have a professional relationship that respects the flow of information. So I just would like to get that into the record. I certainly would like to see a lot more detailed information updated from it.
We need to just be careful about what is, you know, a future agenda item. And I understand there's a, maybe that's more appropriate for the report earlier in the meeting, but if there's going to be further dialogue, I think we need to be careful if we're going to address that now or ask for a future agenda item. So we'll leave it at that.
I'll hold my comment then, Ryan.
Okay, we can, yeah, we can't talk about that now because of the Brown Act, so we'll have a discussion about the best way. The only thing I'd say is, it sounds like my mother-in-law says, "Why don't you call?" And it says, "The phone works both ways." And I'll leave it at that. So with that, if there's no other items for future agendas, we stand adjourned.